I thought it was my turn, but I didn't know.
All the record meeting of the Pennington County Commission to order. Just point out that there's agendas in the back of the room. If you would like to speak on a particular issue, there's speaker request forms back there also. You can turn those into, Holly, sitting up here to your right. And I would just ask that you silence your cell phones or pagers at this point in time. I would ask Commissioner Lassiter to lead us in a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business we have today is the election of officers for the coming year. We have a choice of how we do the vote, if we want to do a voice vote, which would be a roll call or by ballot. Is there a motion?
Motion to do roll call? I'm sorry. No, not roll call. Is it roll call? Yes.
Motion to do a roll call? Okay. Okay, we got a motion and a second for a roll call vote. Any public comment? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item we have up then is the nomination for chairman for the coming year.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd nominate Gary Drews.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. Are there any other motions? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering.
It's a roll call. Roll call vote.
Haddockock?
No.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Lassiter?
No.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item is the appointment of a vice chair.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
I would nominate Lloyd LaCroy for vice chair for 2022.
I've got a motion. Is there a second? I will second that.
I have a motion, Chair, for Travis Lassiter for vice chair.
I've got a motion for Travis. Second. And a second.
Chairman.
So, do you want to make that as a substitute motion, Commissioner Hancock?
No, you can have more than one nomination.
You're just taking nominations.
Okay, okay. So, the procedure then we'll follow is we have, do we have any others? If not, we will vote on the motions as they were made then. Roll call vote, so a motion to appoint Commissioner LaCroy as the vice chair, roll call vote.
Haddockock?
No.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Lassiter?
No.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye. Motion carried. No reason to vote on the second nomination.
Nope.
Okay, next item that we have is establish the salaries for the commission for the coming year. And I believe, Holly, that in our budgeting, we budgeted $28,000 per commissioner for the coming year.
Yes, so the motion we're looking for today is to move to set the 2022 salaries for the Board of Commissioners at $1,076.93 bi-weekly, which equals $28,000 annually.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Move for approval.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second? And a second. Is there any public comment? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Carried four to one. Commissioner Haddockock voting no. Review and approve agenda. Any public comments on the agenda? Seeing none? Commission?
Move for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Consent calendar.
Holly Hennings.
Good morning. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 21, 2021. Number eight is approval of the 2022 poll worker salaries resolution submitted by the auditor. Number nine is approval of the amended sublease agreement between Pennington County and the City of Rapid City submitted by the auditor. Number 10 is to declare the building structures located at 27 St. Joseph Street, asset number 006590, a surplus for the purpose of being demolished as the structures are no longer necessary, useful, or suitable for the purposes of which they were required. Number 11 is to designate the Hill City Prevailers, the Pennington County Current, and the Rapid City Journal as the three legal official newspapers for 2022. Number 12 is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle from the Four Rivers Shrine Club in Crescent Lodge, number 210. Number 13 is to designate Wells Fargo Bank of South Dakota and First Interstate Bank as the primary active depositories for 2022 pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 7-20-13. And finally, number 14 is to acknowledge the public depository liability court relief report as submitted by the treasurer.
Any members of the public that wish to have any item on the consent calendar removed for discussion? Any members of the commission wishing to have any items, seven through 14, removed for discussion? Not, I would take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second? And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 15, the 2022 Extension Advisory Board appointments. We had this discussion at our last meeting. I believe there's one new person that had applied to go on this, John James. Is John in the room? John, why don't you come on forward? Identify yourself and just tell us a little bit about yourself, if you would, please.
Okay, I'm a new resident of Pennington County. Got a pretty long experience of volunteering within the community and just wanted to find a way to give back a little bit and learn a little bit more about what's going on inside of the community in any way I can.
Well, we appreciate you stepping forward.
Welcome.
This is a very worthwhile cause that you step forward for, so appreciate that.
Yeah, interested in learning more about it wasn't something I was involved in growing up, so that definitely hopefully I have an opportunity to meet with Regina and the team over there pretty soon and kind of learn more about the process and the system.
Super. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I didn't notice it. Are there any other members of that board on? Oh, come on.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Oden. I currently have served as the Chair of the Extension Advisory Board. I have two kids currently in 4-H, ages eight and 11. Really excited about all the good things that we're doing here in Pennington County, and I look forward to continuing to serve on that board for you.
Very good. Appreciate it, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Oh, sitting right there, very obvious.
Patty.
Being very quiet, Patty.
You not speaking, Patty, is not good. Not right.
We were feeling some love that day, Patty.
I came and I dual purpose.
There you go.
I got my tags while I'm here. Patty Brunner, 4-H life member. Been on the extension board since, what, '06? And as you know, I'm very much a youth proponent and supporter. I think it's very important that we give youth an option of programs to participate in, healthy choices, learn by doing. Those are all the 4-H mottos. So, glad to be here and would appreciate it. And this is a good board to support 4-H. I thank you for what you've done.
Super. So Patty, are you the longest-serving board member at the present time?
Probably. I don't see anybody else raising their hand.
Well, we appreciate it. 15 years, that's a good record for you.
It's hard to quit, and about the time you want to retire, here comes a little 4-H member about yay high that, you know, how do you stop? Thank you, Ms. Patty.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you for all you do.
Mr. Chairman.
Do I have, yes, Commissioner?
I'd just like to make a comment as being on ladies on their board for so many years, and that was at the push of Ms. Haddockock many years ago that I got involved with you guys. And now you've got Mark DeSanto, who also enjoys being with you guys, and you guys do such great work in looking out for the youth in our community. And Matt, you run a good meeting. It's been a good experience, and I really appreciate all the work that you guys do. And John, I think is going to be a good insight for you guys, being fresh, you know, into it and has some suggestions, so I think you guys will really appreciate all the work that you guys do.
That was good.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion was to appoint Patty Brunner, Matthew Oden, Dallas Boss, Mark DeSanto, Heather Chablisse, Lloyd LaCroy, and John James to the 2022 Extension Advisory Board and approve the chair signature to the warrants of appointments. Motion carried. Item 16, items from the sheriff.
Good morning, Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff, and with me is Steph McCoy, Director of our Administrative Services. She helped put the information together, so she's going to help with the presentation while she's getting that queued up. Can I give these handouts to you?
Absolutely. Sure? That's okay. Go ahead.
Well, thank you for giving us the time this morning to hear this request. I know it's out of sync, so to speak, with the rest of the budget process, but we're faced with a situation that, you know, you didn't create, we didn't create, but market forces have created that we feel we need to respond to and deal with in terms of our law enforcement pay scale. We've had several meetings with John from County HR and with the auditor's office, Cindy and some of her staff, talking through this process, and John was supportive of us creating these two different scales for law enforcement and for medical. If he's here, he can certainly speak for himself, but again, met several times, exchanged emails, making him aware of what we're doing. I know it's a deviation from what we've done historically, but to try and fix what we're trying to fix, we follow the model that exists with many other government entities, the state, the city, other counties, where law enforcement's on a separate scale. In the state in particular, they have medical on a separate scale. Right now, in the county, we have some of our medical people on the scale, some of them are just kind of a footnote off to the side that we deal with separately every year, so it'd be nice to actually put them onto a scale. And we think this cleans up both the rest of the county scale and cleans up our scale in terms of functionality. And then as we move forward to look at future wage studies, this will be actually a step in the right direction for a long-term fix. The motions you'll see that we have included, if you decide to support the request, they're kind of lengthy, and there are several of them. That comes through our meetings with the auditor's office to make sure all the boxes are checked and so they can make sure legislative audit is happy and make sure it meets the payroll criteria. So you'll see a number of motions. That's why they're broken out the way they are. That was through a series of meetings we had with the auditor's office and respected their wishes on that. It does not impact my scale as my pay as an elected official, everybody else but me in the sworn law enforcement ranks, and it doesn't include corrections. They'll stay on the county scale separate. That's what you'll see in the motion. It's specific to, you know, law enforcement sergeant, law enforcement lieutenant. So the auditor's office wanted clarity on who it actually impacted and who it didn't. But we have a short PowerPoint to give you a copy. We'll run through that and then certainly stand for any questions you have. Hit the next one. The summer concerns, this course, we're just falling behind the market. The market's changed so dramatically, and the City of Rapid City in particular gave significant increases to, you know, the police department this year. Of course, we share a building, we share task forces, we share tactical team together, and it's important we stay competitive so enough people walk across the hall and go to work for the other agency in our building. We'll talk about the cost and impact of turnover when that happens, and Steph's going to talk about the pay banding and why it was advantageous to move off of that.
Yep, like the sheriff said, this is kind of our why slide when we're trying to problem solve the situation that we have and why not just increase the deputy sheriff wages on the current pay scale. And at the end of the day, it's because our pay scale has lumped several different positions together into pay bands, and those pay, all those positions in the same pay band don't all have the same problem. It's specific to the deputy sheriff position, particularly in our office. We don't need to raise counselors and teachers and administrative staff. We don't have the same issue. So financially, it doesn't make sense to just raise the pay band, and then it's just not necessary as far as the market goes. So that's our why for moving them off the scale. It also, if you just move the entry level wages, it messes with everybody else that's currently on your staff, and it causes a lot of contention. So in doing this, we tried to place everybody on the scale where we didn't jump current employees with new employees. Then, like the sheriff said, our medical positions, we have three of them that aren't even on our pay scale currently because they just don't fit in the puzzle. This puts them on an actual pay scale, gives them a minimum and a maximum so they know where they're going with their future. And then as we move forward, the next wage study, we're not trying to figure out how to pay a registered nurse, what we need to pay in the market while trying to be equitable to our supervisors in our office on the same pay scale.
And we didn't want to, like Steph said, just move the entry level, and then we created a compression problem in the scale, so this was a scale-wide fix. Again, hopefully sets us up for the next few years in terms of compression entry level. The next slide. So this was where we started. It was some of our data. Steph and I started collecting data so we could see where are we in the market. So you can see we're the third most populated jurisdiction in terms of city counties in the state. And if you go to the right, our entry level, we're second from the bottom. So we compete with all those other agencies when it comes to hiring and retaining employees, so that paints a difficult picture for us in terms of retention and recruiting. Go ahead, Steph.
These are just some data points that are in your packet. We're experiencing turnover that we've never experienced in our office. You look back, I've tracked since the sheriff took, his term started in 2011, and we've gone from, you know, five to eight deputies leaving our office in a year for reasons that we predict. They don't make training, they're going to retire, or we know, like, say their spouse or their family's from a different state and they're looking to relocate. Till last year, we had 18 leave for just a variety of reasons, and at the end of the day, it's simply because they can, because they're able to move in the market, and we're now tolerating that as far as law enforcement goes. So it's a significant impact. You can see what the police department did. Historically, we've stayed within about a dollar of them entry level wage-wise, and that we can compete with. In 2022, that increases to 12% just entry level, and then they've negotiated additional salary increases in 2023. That's going to make that disparity greater, and that continues down the line. So it's not just on the entry level, it's with current staff. So if you take a 10-year employee, that gap is greater than current employees, so you can see what happens over the years.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lassiter.
May I ask a couple of quick questions while you're talking about this? So when you talk about your turnover, and I know you said it's various reasons why you have a high turnover. So with the pay aspect of it, is it the pay that's really the turnover? Do you have exit surveys on that so that we can kind of get a better idea of it? And the second part of this question is, since you've instituted the bonus, how many of those individuals have departed, if any? I mean, I don't know if any of them have departed, and what have you all done with that? Do they get to keep that money with no repercussions? Is there a recovery on that? You know, I'm just asking the questions.
You're talking about the corrections bonus piece?
Right.
Let me answer the first one first.
As far as why deputies leave, not necessarily always tied to pay. Pay makes it more palatable. So one gentleman, he was looking at relocating to Jackson Hole, Wyoming. He's a beautiful, single guy. It's a lot more fun there than it is here, according to him. And he looked at it, and at the end of the day, he said, you know, I like it here and it's comparable, and they were able to throw him a $15,000 hiring bonus. So at the end of that day, that was a factor. We had a gentleman originally from Dickinson, North Dakota. He and his wife were looking at going back up there to the police department. He asked us for more money to stay to match what they were willing to pay him initially, and we weren't able to because of the impact to the rest of our staff. So it's a motivating factor. It's what they're weighing in their decision. Is it the only reason they're leaving? No.
And as far as the corrections and the bonus piece, I'll have to follow up with data for you. Again, this is just law enforcement specific. It doesn't impact the correction side. Corrections will stay on the county scale, but I can get that follow-up data. I think we had, was it 19 the last count, or did it go up?
We've hired 19 under the hiring bonus. I can't recall off the top of my head anybody who's left since we've implemented that.
And what that we did, and we talked about that before, it did increase our number of applications, and again, we had 19 people take advantage of the hiring bonus, so hopefully that's a fix. We've done a couple of things for corrections that we haven't done for law enforcement. We're paying double overtime. Again, commission approved this and the bonus that we've offered, and that was through the commission, and we hope those are some fixes for the correction side of the House. And the corrections, if you look at it in the state, were above, at or above market. Regionally, we're at or above market on corrections. So there's no, it's hard for me to come and say, hey, we need to fix corrections when we're at or above the market, but law enforcement, we're below the market, so that's why we've separated off the law enforcement piece and the medical.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddockock.
So the deputies, I understand, how about the sergeant, lieutenant captain, and chief deputy? Did you guys do a comparison through the state on some of those wage scales? Just so we could see the comparison. I know you have the deputy one and two, but how about the chief deputy law enfor, or the captain, the lieutenant, and the sergeants?
Yeah, we did.
Is that comparable?
Obviously, if you, if you move one, you have to move the others because there's a ripple effect. And we did look at a comparison data with the police department, and did you look further with other agencies? Just the police department, we looked at their sergeant, lieutenant captains, because that's who we share a building with.
So you did comparables with them?
Correct.
For those positions, and did you have them somewhere? Do you know those total, or do you know that amount or anything, Kevin, on those or?
How they compare to the police department?
We still fall behind. We're just so far behind. The point of this was to increase our entry level salary, so we focused on that, and then we moved everybody else through the steps for compression reasons. We didn't do a full-blown wage study on our law enforcement ranks. I don't even think fiscally we could have implemented it if we have, simply because if we've fallen 12% on the entry level, that's it reasons that that falls up through the ranks.
So Steph, can, once we do this, can we see where some of your employees and stuff after this, where they're at, just to make sure they're comparable, and it's nice to kind of, I'm not against this at all, I just kind of, it's nice to see where we fall and where our people fall in these categories at this time. I know the entry level, we do, we pretty much got that down, meaning from other services and Sioux Falls and stuff, but just to see what those other, like sergeants, lieutenants, captains, and chief deputies.
And like I said, we will still be behind the police department. I don't remember the percentages. It's five, six, seven, eight, 10% depends on the rank, but we're still behind, we still lag behind them as you go up the scale, but we can get additional data if you'd like. This slide just talks about our hiring, and, you know, we talk about the cost of turnover. We oftentimes don't quantify it. We quantified it for last year, for 2021. We spent, it cost us $1.5 million in turnover. So to onboard somebody at the sheriff's office, it's a two-to-three-month process. And then once you're onboard, if you don't have experience, it takes over eight months before you're working on the street by yourself through our training process, through the academy, through our field training. So we have a big investment in people before they hit the street. So you can see the cost of hiring somebody with no experience and first somebody with experience. We like lateral hires when we can because we have to invest less into them. We actually broke this down and went through and quantified it.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddockock.
So Kevin, I'm not, I'm not against this because the wage scale needs to be different for you guys because it's never really worked in both the Condrey and the Gallagher. So I'm not against this. I just want to see, you know, just like any chart, where you guys are at, where you're going, and what that, what that means for budget and some other stuff. So do I think that the wage scale needs to be changed? Yes, sir. Just, just nice to see all the numbers and how they've changed, sir.
And you should have a copy of the wage scale in your packet, and we'll talk about budget impact here in a slide coming up. But anyway, that's kind of the peak at the cost of turnover. Steph, any other comments on that? So how do we solve it? Again, we talked about removing law enforcement and medical onto different scales, and we want to create, in the law enforcement scale, we want to follow county policy. So for hiring, the same 10% discretion, promotion, the same policy, the same 1.25 steps that the county voted to go in '23. This would affect in August of this year, so it's just a few months ahead of what county is implementing for the rest of the scale in '23. So we want to mirror the county policies when it comes to implementation. And again, we talked about compression quite a bit, so won't belabor that, and, yeah, just trying to be competitive at a higher entry level. So here's a cost that Commissioner Haddockock asked about. $283,000 this year, and 2023, it would be an additional 50, 60,000 on top of that for implementation, because it's not a full implementation this year, it's partial implementation. And then you got next year, you'd have a full implementation. The medical scale is nominal, you know, $7,300 across all the positions, because most of those just move a few cents, so it's nominal. And I think the important part here is the cost to be absorbed in our 2022 budget. And people wonder, well, how can you absorb that much? And I have a subsequent slide that I'll talk to as to the additional revenues that we generate that'll help us do that. And again, I've had several conversations with the auditor's office about impact. You know, one thing, we would need a budget supplement later in the year to the law enforcement side from the other revenues we have to make this happen at some point. But again, that would come later in the year to see where our extra dollars are, and how much we'd have to actually supplement. But we do generate the additional revenue that we need to pull this off, so to speak, and make it happen. And, you know, we return close to $1 million a year. Last year was less. In talking to the auditor, Cindy tells us that she counts on about 3% of our tax supports, about $350,000, $360,000 to revert back to help carry over for next year's budget. We generally far exceed that, so we feel the revenues are there to support it. On average, this provides an additional 5% pay bump to law enforcement, above and beyond what you've already approved for a county salary policy. It'd be on average 5% and some are less, and, you know, some are more, but if you average them all out, on average, it's about 5%. And the variance comes because it depends where you place people on the scale to deal with the compression. So law enforcement, an additional step on current scale, plus one step, we call it title adjustments or title or name adjustments, like the law enforcement sergeant, law enforcement lieutenant. So this is, you see this every year, our budget presentation, because I like to talk about it. You know, this is the money we generate for the county through the work we do. Again, we run very business-like, very entrepreneurial-like when it comes to the county's budget. So over the last few years, we returned over $8 million over collected revenue and underspent budget. So again, 2021, that's our projected number. That could move a little bit, one way or the other, was impacted by COVID, you know. Hopefully, we're getting past some of the COVID issues, and some of our revenues will bounce back. It's impacting, like, a care at the juvenile center, not the jail so much. Our revenues have stayed high there, but it has impacted our revenues in some of those areas. We believe those will bounce back to where they were in previous years, so we feel we're generating the funds to do it. Go ahead. So the, I'm going to talk this one, Steph.
So that at the end of 2022, if approved, what we'll accomplish is separate scales moving forward. We will have increased our entry level for the deputy sheriff one position by 7%. So that's what we accomplished through all of these moves. And that position is, positions us within a dollar of the Rapid City Police Department in 2022. They do get an additional increase in 2023 that we simply aren't able to touch right now. They actually get another $3 an hour at that point. But it closes the gap. It's a big step. So visually, this is what it does. It takes us from one of the largest entities with the lowest pay to one of the largest entities. It puts us in the middle of the pack is what we accomplish. And that's if nobody else does anything else between now and then.
And some of the other entities already talked about increasing their starting pay, but this is '22 data as we know it today. And again, our concern is one, we feel there's a sense of urgency because it's going to impact our hiring and recruiting and retention. The other thing is, if we don't take this off in smaller bites, we're not going to be able to fix this down the road. We're going to be to a point where it will be financially impossible to fix. So if we don't do this in steps, in increments, we'll never get to where we need to be to stay competitive. So with that, we'll be quiet and stand for any questions. So thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross, connect.
Thank you, Kevin. Relative to the entry level hourly wage, compared to those other municipalities, are similar, are the benefits similar, the vacation time, medical, and whatnot?
You're going to find a fairly wide variance in benefit packages. If you're looking at the benefits, definitely. I mean, the league's going to vary a little bit. Now, we've just changed our county holiday pay to kind of mirror the city, so that's very consistent. The insurance, we kind of see saw back and forth with different agencies. Sometimes we're better, sometimes we're worse. Maybe John or Steph has some additional data as to overall with benefits, where we've fallen in the pack. Do you have any?
Yeah, there's, like the sheriff said, there's a variety. I'll just speak to the ones that I'm familiar with, with the city of Rapid City. They offer dual packages, just like we do, ones at no cost to the employee. You look at Boxel, they offer no-cost health insurance to the employee. Both of those are union entities. So it's just, each one of those is going to be different in comparison. I know we put together, it Gallagher did compare our benefits, and we were higher on all of our premiums for healthcare in the, I believe it was 12 agencies that responded to their study, which I don't believe are the agencies on the screen. So it's, it'll be all over if you want to get that in-depth with the analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
I just have a question on the deputy sheriff one and two. Maybe it's the way it's structured, maybe it's the way it's worded, so I'm confused. To me, as I read it, it sounds like there could be two steps for the deputy sheriff one and deputy sheriff two. And it says one additional step on the 22, 22 county wage scale effective January 9th, 2022 for all the above-listed employees. And then two, place the listed employees onto the law enforcement wage scale on the step where they do not lose money with a minimum of 2.5% increase for those with four more years' service, plus one additional step for listed employees effective July 24. Am I reading that correctly? They're going to get a step in January 9th and in July 24, on July 24th? Is that how I'm reading that, two steps within six months?
Yes, yep. So the way that we did it in order to move everybody, so our current scale starts at 2314, and we're trying to get our new scale to start at 2485, I believe. So we have to take all of those bodies under about that $25 an hour mark and move them so that we can hire the new guy or gal in August at the new rate without the new person starting at the same rate a four-year employee is starting. So it, we took it in chunks. Everybody, lieutenant and under moves in January to get them pushed out in a chunk. And then when they go onto the new scale, they get a minimum increase so they don't go to where they just, again, start where the new employee starts in August. So hence the point of the step, once you get on a scale. So that way, come 2023, you don't have all of these bodies with varying years of service at the same rate of pay.
How many employees is that going to impact?
Well, total law enforcement ranks, we have right at 100. The chief deputies and captains are just getting put on the scale and then moved out a step. And then everybody with zero to four years of experience is getting the step in January and then put on the scale. And then those with four plus are getting the minimum increase to go on the scale again, so they don't collide with everybody else that's beneath them. So it, that's, that's why there's an additional cost in 2023 is because from August forward, we only moved half of those bodies again.
And like we discussed earlier, if we don't, we fix entry level, don't fix anything else. It's the same thing we've dealt with with Gallagher or Condry and the others. You know, if you don't fix the compression, you really haven't fixed the scale. And I think this is a fix to both. And again, I do want to emphasize just, again, the cost of turnover. You know, $1.5 million last year in turnover costs. That's a real number because that's, that's time that deputies aren't on the street responding to calls or doing proactive patrols. So for us, it's a, it's a real number.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Well, Kevin and Steph, thanks for your report. And I, I support the scale. I think, you know, under the stuff that we've gone through in the last couple of years with law enforcement and so forth, it's been difficult. And then you bring the pandemic and what else going on, we were kind of forced to. I don't want to fall behind on this. And I think you guys done a good job of getting up their clothes, not up to perfect with the competitive parts. But one of the other things I want to commend you guys on is, is your outreach and promoting to get employees to come work for the sheriff's department. I've personally seen some of your messages on Instagram and so forth. And I really appreciate the outreach you do. And one of the things I also see is that you guys, when new people come on, you recognize them. It's more of a family event and you're making it more personal for bringing them in. And I think that's a big step in what you guys do. And from my experience of working with some of the people in the PD and with the sheriff's department, they prefer sheriff's department because, because of that. You know, the more the family need and also they're able to go out in the community and be more present and talk and more social, that type of thing than, than police officers are. So I think they appreciate that. So your outreach and trying to get the employees in and also make them feel like family, I really commend you guys on.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ross, connect.
Kevin, I want to thank you for putting a detailed report together because it certainly helps us as commissioners going forward on approving these motions, seeing that research and knowing that as a county, we're lagging behind in certain areas in the law enforcement.
Thank you, Steph gets most of the credit for compiling all the data, so thank you, Steph.
Well, it was well worth it. I mean, this shows how we need to be as far as being competitive. And so I appreciate, instead of taking the Band-Aid approach of trying to come up with a solution to take care of the issue. Obviously, this isn't the only time we're going to talk about this. But at the same time, I think that you've developed some great solutions here for moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haidcock.
I guess I, I'm not against doing the wage scale. I just, I'm not seeing basically where everybody's at. Maybe I can't read the wage scale on here, right? Or something? Because you have, if you're, if you're giving one step right in January and then two steps, and you're giving everybody that, am I correct? In order to make the compression? So people aren't making more than the other people? But a couple of things. A lot of people dealt with the pandemic, not just law enforcement, so I appreciate that. And our employees stuck with us in Pennington County through this pandemic for a lot of different departments. So we appreciate them all. Law enforcement, through some of the media and stuff, took, took some big hits. But bottom line, I think a lot of the employees went through pandemic with us and had the same kind of issues with employment and the things that COVID-19 came to pass in Pennington County. So that being said, I, I'm going to be up straight. I don't know if the one step and the two-step is correct based on just looking at the scale. Like I said, I'm not against a different wage scale. I just, it, to me, it doesn't have enough information for me to make a good decision on there. The deputy one and two, got that. I mean, I'm seeing that, but I'm not, I'm not seeing the comparison on the lieutenant captain and the chief deputy. I'm also seeing that the chief deputy can be as, make more money as well than even the sheriff can. So, and maybe he already does. I don't know. I didn't look, but I don't, that's what I'm saying. I'm not against this. I just like a little bit more information on it. And maybe that can come later. But without understanding it, it's hard to, to say on every motion that I'm okay with the one and two step for the higher-ups. I'm okay with the deputy one and two with the information you have.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Am I missing something?
I think, I think I understand your point. And the challenge is, if you fix the lower end of the scale and don't fix the middle and upper end of the scale, then we're back to where we started. We still have compression in the scale. And you disincentivize people from, wanting to move from a sergeant to a lieutenant or lieutenant to a captain and vice versa. Because if I can make as much or more money where I'm at, why would I move up the scale and take on more responsibility? So that's what you see reflected in that scale. And again, it varies with lieutenant captain, chief deputy. The city scales, again, you're going to be 5% to 10%, 8% somewhere in there. Different still behind the city scales. But we're advocating that we do a comprehensive fix. Because if you just fix part of the scale, we've done so many things piecemeal over the years. Then we end up with a cobbled mess. So we're saying, rather than do the Band-Aid approach, let's fix it comprehensively and be done with it and implement it. So I, I think it does what we want it to do. Apologize for this confusion. Confusing, we can get additional data and follow up with you if you want individually. But we think it makes sense as proposed in terms of dealing with the compression side of the scale.
Well, and again, I'm not against it. I just didn't know if it, if for compression, is it one step? Is it two steps for that compression on when you're doing lieutenants, captains, and chief deputies? Is that one or two to make that scale level? Does everybody have to have the same? Does everybody have to have that January and that July to make that scale so it's not compressed? Do you see what I'm saying? It's not that I'm against any steps. It's who are you compressing? And it, should it be one or two steps? And based on the scale, I can't tell.
Yep, and we did, so we're not treating everybody the same for that exact reason. So I literally took every employee, where they're at currently, where they're going next year under current salary policy. And then we, we looked at, okay, if we move all of the deputies to where we need to get them to be, what did that do to my sergeants? So what do I have to do to the sergeants to continue to solve the problem down the line? So that's why the captains and chief deputies aren't getting the additional steps. We didn't have to move them all the times. And that's why, like, the lieutenants on down that have been here for four or more years are getting one more step than everybody who's been here less than four years because that's the only group that needed that. So we did piece it out and I have that by individual, and I'm visual too. So that's how I had to do it to solve it.
So I get it. So what I thought, Steph and Kevin, is that, that you were giving everybody that step and two-step just to make everybody higher up past the, but you're not. You're actually basing on wage scale and how, like, how long they've been there, all that kind of stuff?
Yes.
All right. I appreciate that. And then maybe I could get with you, Steph, and look at some of the differences that we made. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
I think part of the key here is the retention. Your numbers show what it costs to bring on, and it's very expensive to bring on new law enforcement individuals with the training, schooling, and so forth. So retention is critical, being able to retain them instead of losing them.
Commissioner Lacroix.
I'd make the, make the motion to separate the wage scale and titles for the law enforcement ranks of deputy sheriff one, deputy sheriff two, law enforcement sergeants, law enforcement lieutenant, law enforcement captain, and chief deputy sheriffs as proposed effective July 24th, 2022.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Public comment? Being done back to the commission for the comment. Are none of all those in favor with a motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
Second motion I'd placed, to place employees in the positions of chief deputy sheriff, law enforcement captain, onto the law enforcement wage scale where they do not lose money, plus one additional step effective July 24th, 2022.
Second. Motion and a second. Any public comment? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor with a motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
Motion number three would be to place employees in the position of deputy sheriff one, deputy sheriff two, law enforcement sergeant, and law enforcement lieutenant onto the law enforcement wage scale through the below steps. Number one, one additional step on the 2022 county wage scale effective January 9th, 2022 for all above-listed employees. Number two, to place all the above-listed employees onto the law enforcement wage scale on the step by where they do not lose money within, with a minimum 2.5% increase for those with four or more years of service, plus one additional step for all listed employees effective July 24th, 2022.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Public comment? Back to the commission for the discussion. All those in favor with a motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So medical scale, and to do have the?
Item B, it's the medical.
Okay. And again, if you want any additional information on the medical, I think we've addressed that through this. If you have additional questions on the medical, certainly glad to answer those. But I think we.
Chairman.
And Commissioner Haidcock.
To approve a separate medical wage scale for the medical positions of EMT, paramedic, licensed practical nurse, registered nurse, certified nurse practitioner, psychologist, and medical director as proposed effectively July 24, 22, and place the employees in a medical position on the scale where they do not lose money.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Public comment? Further discussion by the commission? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Say thank you. And I know it's unorthodox timing in terms of budget and everything else, but the market forces created something we had to respond to. And I know our staff appreciates the support of the commission, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 17, Dustin.
Good morning, chair members of the commission. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. It's, it's good to come before you in 2022. So I hope everyone had a good holiday season and New Year. So just a couple of numbers on COVID-19 in Pennington County. So yesterday, our case count was up to about 950. This is up from a low in December, mid-December of about 721. So if you look at the, if you look at the graph, you know, we're about half of our highest peak. And we've just kind of been sitting there for a while. We, we keep ticking away a couple of deaths. We're up to 287 deaths of Pennington County residents since we started this a few years ago. Our case rate, so the, it's that seven-day rolling average that they use to kind of gauge community spread. Those numbers change depending on whether you're using the South Dakota Department of Health monuments or the CDC's numbers. But Monument and the Department of Health are within a percentage. So the Department of Health says we're up to about 19% of our rolling average of positive tests, and Monument is at 18%. So up a little bit from, from the last time we visited. And really, what that indicates is that we still have virus moving through our community. And I don't think that's a surprise to anybody. We, we know that the virus is still here. We know that people are still getting sick and being hospitalized and dying from COVID-19 in our community. So vaccinations, again, the numbers are different between South Dakota and CDC simply because the South Dakota numbers don't have access to the database. They don't reflect the IHS, VA, DOD, Bureau of Prisons, all those federal organizations that do have vaccination programs. The South Dakota numbers don't, don't capture that. So really, if we look at, at South Dakota vaccination numbers in terms of Pennington County, and these numbers are adjusted for five and older. So right now, everyone over the age of five is eligible for, for a vaccine. And so the percentages are adjusted for. and so the, the percentages are adjusted, uh, for, for the vaccinated, for the, for the population that's allowed to be vaccinated. Uh, so folks in Pennington County with at least one dose, it's 48%, um, uh, complete series at 39%, and with a booster in Pennington County is 16%. Uh, in terms of vaccination, uh, depending on, on where you stand with it, uh, at least from, from my office's perspective, there's some, some pretty good news, and that is for a while there, uh, we weren't seeing much in the way of new vaccine, uh, vaccinations. I mean, we'd look at them at a one-week period, and maybe there were 14 new vaccines. Um, with this last week, uh, the, the, the last week that was reported, um, we've got in Pennington County, uh, 299, uh, brand-new first-time doses, 151 new completed series, and 426 new boosters in a one-week period. So, uh, we're seeing, uh, just within the last couple of weeks, a significant, if you look at the, at the graphing over the last several weeks, there's a, an uptake of vaccination in Pennington County, which uh, is our, our best tool right now, uh, to limit the effects of, of, uh, the virus as it continues to move through our community. Um, if we take into account the CDC numbers, they look a lot better. Uh, so, uh, the entire population above five in Pennington County that's had one dose is up to 74%, which is huge. Uh, the complete series at 58% and with a booster at 31%. So, uh, when the CDC includes those federal organizations, the numbers in Pennington County, uh, are actually pretty encouraging. Um, Monument Health, uh, as of Friday, so there's a few more in the hospital as of today, uh, but I don't have the breakdown of vaccinated, unvaccinated. Friday is when Monument Health, uh, releases that information. So, uh, this last Friday, there were 25 hospitalized, 18 of them, uh, of the 25 were unvaccinated, nine in the ICU with one unvaccinated, and seven patients on ventilators with one unvaccinated. Uh, Rattstadt area schools currently, uh, 34 students are, are, uh, have tested positive, and 12 staff. Um, and so that, those numbers are down from, from what we've seen, uh, in, in weeks and months since, since school started. So, again, some encouraging numbers, uh, across the board, uh, with the exception of, of our transmission is still high, and obviously, we still have a lot of people in the community being affected by this. Uh, I, I always talk about that CDC ensemble forecast model, uh, so it takes multiple different forecast models and then sums those totals, uh, and gives a, uh, most of the time, a pretty accurate forecast for at least the next week and potentially two weeks. Uh, after two weeks, the model doesn't work very well. And that actually shows Pennington County holding about even and maybe even decreasing a little bit. So, um, that's what the forecast model says. Uh, sometimes it's pretty accurate, sometimes it's off by a little bit. It's usually not incredibly off, uh, so that's encouraging as well. Um, one of the big concerns, uh, from my office in, in terms of, of the health of our community, uh, is, um, flu. So, flu is looking like it's, it's, uh, potentially going to be a significant issue for our community in South Dakota this year. Uh, the last week that was reported was basically the week of Christmas. It ended December 25th, uh, and that week of reporting in flu cases for that week of December 20th, ending in December 25th, um, showed a five-fold increase from the week prior. And this is a way earlier spike than the last six or seven years of, of flu in our community. Usually, we start seeing a spike in March. Uh, uh, March and April tend to be our really big flu months, and, uh, we saw a huge spike starting in, in the week of December 25th. Uh, and so that's, that's concerning. Um, just to give, you know, when, when people were hyper vigilant uh, about infection control with COVID, uh, you know, last year, we had 71, uh, laboratory confirmed cases of the flu, which is incredible. Um, uh, at, the week ending, uh, December 25th, we were up to just under 2,000. So, 1,931 confirmed cases, uh, um, in basically the very beginning of our flu, flu season compared to a total of 71 last year. So, we are going to see, we've already seen, um, a more significant flu impact this year than we did last year. So, we've got COVID still floating around out there, obviously. Flu looks like it's going to be a, a more of a player this year. And again, uh, not to sound like a broken record, but, but vaccination is our best tool against that. Um, and the last couple of numbers on flu is currently, or to date with flu in South Dakota, 44 hospitalizations and two deaths. So, we've had two deaths in the state from, from flu. Uh, most of what's circulating right now is influenza A. Uh, in terms of new stuff that's out there, um, so, uh, a lot of headlines about, um, air travel and, and the impacts of both weather and, and, uh, sick call-ins in the airline industry. Uh, Monday, uh, Regional Airport had, I think, five flights canceled. Uh, when I looked today, it only looked like maybe one flight had canceled. Um, but we're certainly seeing some, some cancellations in the airline industry, uh, whether that's a holdover from weather. Uh, obviously, weather hit the, the west coast earlier, and then right now, the east coast is dealing with some weather. So, there's certainly some weather impact there. And then there's some, some sick outs as well that are affecting, uh, air travel. Um, in terms of, uh, vaccinations in, in Pennington County, we've got 14 locations across, uh, Pennington County providing COVID vaccinations actively right now, and, uh, nine, uh, locations that, that you can get your flu vaccine at. Um, some of the, the latest news, uh, obviously, the CDC has, has made some, some changes in their isolation recommendations and their, their quarantine recommendations. Bless you. Uh, what they're saying now is with a, a positive test, uh, that they want you to isolate for five days. Um, it, and after five days, if you're asymptomatic or if you, what they say, uh, they say, they use the, the term improving, well, you can look it up, and what they mean by improving is if you are more than 24 hours without a fever, um, without having to use, uh, medicine to, to lower your fever. So, so basically, if you test positive, uh, you're supposed to isolate for at least five days. Um, and after those five days, if you're asymptomatic or if you're afebrile, you don't have a fever for 24 hours, uh, then the CDC recommendation is that you can, um, then, uh, stop your isolation, but you have to continue to wear a mask for, for five days and be very conscientious about your, your social or your physical distancing. Um, the interesting science that came out with some of that, that, that kind of got overshadowed by, by some of the, the headlines, I guess, is some of the reports, some of the data that, that drove that decision. And it's interesting that they've said, um, that, uh, what they're seeing is the highest likelihood of transmission of COVID-19 is a one to two days prior to the onset of symptoms, uh, and then two to three days after. Um, so it looks like very early on, even before people become symptomatic, and some people obviously remain asymptomatic the entire time. Um, but that one to two days prior to symptoms, two to three days after symptoms, uh, really has the highest likelihood of transmission. So, we're spreading this very, very early in the infections, which kind of drove that decision, along with, uh, uh, you know, trying to keep infrastructure staffed and functioning. Um, the other big news that came out is, is, uh, rolling back from six months for your eligibility for your booster to five months. So, now you can get your, your booster dose of, of, uh, mRNA vaccine after five months. Uh, and the Pfizer booster is available for anyone 12 and up. So, there's, uh, the, the Moderna is still 18. Pfizer, now you can get a booster dose, uh, at 12 years old and five months post your, uh, completion of your, your two series. Um, so those are the numbers. That, that's, that's, that's basically what I have. Uh, obviously, people are fatigued. Everybody's fatigued, uh, with, with, um, infection control and, and, and talk of sickness, and, uh, it still continues to dominate the headlines, you know, two years into this thing. Um, and so people are fatigued. Uh, what I, what I've tried to relay from the beginning, uh, remains, um, my office's biggest concern, and that is healthcare. Uh, we, we need to make sure that healthcare in our community remains intact, not just healthcare for COVID-19 patients, but just healthcare in general. Uh, our healthcare workforce is obviously stressed. Um, our facilities are, are, are stressed, uh, and that's been continual now for, for a really long time. And so, uh, that remains our, our biggest concern is, is that, uh, we're able to, to keep and maintain a, a well-functioning healthcare system in our community for everybody. Um, that's what I've got here this morning, and certainly happy to stand for any questions. And if you have any specific questions, I'll, I'll go run and do some research.
Any questions for Dustin?
Chairman.
Commissioner Haggard.
Just a couple. So, isn't COVID-19 is a virus?
Yes, ma'am.
And it mutates?
Yes, ma'am.
And we've got two shots plus a booster on a virus that will mutate?
Mm-hmm.
Can you keep just having a different shot every year, every six months, every time it mutates?
It's a really good question. Uh, and, and the question, i- it's not an answerable question, because we don't know where this virus is going to go with this mutation.
Right.
There's some hope. Uh, and right now, it's so early in the game, I, I'm hesitant to even bring it up. But, you know, the hope is that th- the virus ends up, uh, moving from a, a pandemic-type situation to endemic. I mean, it's just, it, it, it falls to levels in severity, um, that, that are equal to other viruses that circulate in our community. So, every year, uh, the virologists really take their best guess at what strains of flu vaccine or what flu are going to be in our communities in every, any given year. So, our flu vaccines every year are different. Um, they, they, they take their best guess on what the strain's going to be for that year, and that's the flu vaccine you get.
But at one time, Dustin, you couldn't go to the doctor, and if it was a virus, they'd never give you a shot because of the mutations and everything that, you know, you just kind of worked through it. Now, every mutation, we're getting a different shot, or we're getting a boost, uh, booster for that mutation. So, I keep saying, how many shots are you going to give people? You don't know the side effects of those shots yet. You're mixing different shots to cure different viruses. Um, to me, that's, it's going to the opposite sometimes of what they tell you or told us before on viruses, and now, um, and we knew it was going to mutate. We talked about it mutating.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. It's just, it's kind of crazy. Like I said, what is truth and what is fact, and, and what if, what is the general public? Because they're asking new questions, because we talked about this at the commission too, and I said, I don't know.
It, it's tough, and I agree. I, I, I agree with, 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 uh, um, that is, uh, that is a reality out there. Uh, and I think we mentioned it the last time I came up here and talked, and it comes down to trust. Uh, and it's really whether or not people, um, who and what, uh, people are comfortable with, and, and who or what people choose to trust. Uh, so, one of the things, um, you know, people don't, not people, I shouldn't say that. Uh, uh, there is still debate. Uh, there is still counter-arguments to childhood immunizations. Um, smallpox is a virus. Measles, mumps, rubella are viruses. Uh, chickenpox, shingles, uh, the list goes on and on and on and on of vaccinations that, at least historically, the majority of society was okay with. And this new reality is, is absolutely a new reality, and people have to do their best to discern. Uh, the, the two things that I would say to that are, we don't know. Uh, when we started talking about COVID-19, and, and I would make the references to, hey, we've been studying the flu for 60 years, and we still don't have some of these answers for the flu. We've been studying COVID for three years. W- w- a lot of these answers, science just doesn't have yet. Uh, we haven't been doing it long enough. And then the only other point I'd add is, the mRNA uh, technology of vaccines.
Right.
Now allow us to very, very rapidly modify and adapt vaccine. We've never had that ability before. To, to completely modify a vaccine to an emerging virus was something that took a really long time. Um, and with the mRNA technology, uh, right, wrong, or indifferent, uh, whether people trust or don't trust, uh, we now have a medical technology that allows our, our vaccination science to be much more responsive to circulating pathogens. I'm sorry.
But how, how come that hasn't came out that way? If, if it did, I think that's why everybody's so uptight about the virus is because of that trust factor. Um, people walking around, just, if you're, have shots, you don't have shots, just getting mad still about it. A lot less than before, I see, because now other people that have got shots, that got two shots and a booster that are getting COVID are going, okay, so, is this making it less for me, or this not making it less for me? And then you're hearing other people, um, heard Medical Center, 48% of their staff won't get shots. So, um, that was kind of crazy to hear, um, from people working there. So, people are taking that exemption, and those, those are medical industry people. So, again, for me, you just, I, and I work in a beauty shop, of course, and then I deal with a lot in the public. So, for me, it's just, it, and it's probably driving everybody else crazy. Where's the trust and, and what do we trust?
The only thing I can, I can definitively speak to on that is, is it depends on, on who, where, and how we feed our head. Where do we get our information from? Um, and we're all influenced by what we see in the media. We're all influenced by what we see on social media, traditional media, print media, um, uh, the interactions and the conversations that we have in, in, in our community.
But what else is left to trust to know that those people that are telling us, is that doctor legitimate enough, or is he getting something from the virus? I mean, that's what you hear, and then the next time, it's doctors saying no, and the nurses saying no, because this, you know, they don't know the side effects. So, it's like, like you said, um, you can see social media, you can see media, you can look it up and try to find information, but you just get counteracted with one with the other. And it drives you absolutely crazy to find, and I'm a fact, trying to find fact kind of person, and it just like, you can't, because some, it seems to be counteracted with something else later.
So, the, yeah. All I can share with you is my personal, uh, how I do that, um, and how I do that. And, and unfortunately, there's a lag, because you can't have, I mean, it takes time to do studies. It takes time to do peer review process. Um, and so people want answers about what's happening in our communities today. Uh, and the lag for professional peer-reviewed articles, um, is significant. We're seeing some pretty good articles coming out right now that's based on 2020 data. Again, it takes that long for, for some of these processes to work themselves out. But personally, um, in order to, to, uh, maintain my sanity, and I, I can relate to that, uh, is, is I try to read peer-reviewed medical papers. Uh, and I have chosen personally, uh, to trust the guidance that's put forward by the CDC. And so I, I look to the CDC, and I look to peer-reviewed medical papers, um, as, as my primary source of, of information. But that's just what I do personally, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lasker.
All right. Here's some more questions for you.
No, thanks.
Uh, some of it's going to kind of tack on what Commissioner Haggard talked about, but I, I understand, this is, this is not specifically what you're talking about, but it is, touches on what you just said here at the very end. I know of doctors here locally who don't trust the CDC, but they're reading peer-reviewed paperwork, uh, documents, but they're not reviewing the ones in the states. They're reviewing the ones that are peer-reviewed from overseas, or, or, because they're, we're seeing different results overseas versus in the United States. And I think that probably, I mean, if you've got peer-reviewed documents in the United States, and you got peer-reviewed documents overseas, if they're all peer-reviewed, then where, where do you go with? And I, and I know, I know personally a couple of doctors here locally who are saying, I'm not following CDC guidelines. I'm following what I'm seeing from overseas. And I mean, that's just kind of the, the basics of it. Um, one of my questions to you is, um, the VAERS data. Have you been looking at the VAERS data and paying attention to it? Because the most recent report that I saw is they've, they've got, they've showed 20, 21,000 deaths. Now, I understand VAERS, you know, I've been in the medical field. VAERS is just, you know, you submit a reaction or some, you know, what you believe is a reaction to, uh, a vaccine and whatnot. 21,000 deaths since the vaccines came out. 30% of those are in days zero, one, and two. So, that's 6,300 deaths, uh, within days zero, one, and two. Now, does that mean that that is from the, the vaccine or not? But I can, you know, obviously, people are going to infer that if there's 6,300 deaths from a vaccine, that maybe there's concern. The other, the other thing that I find interesting is that we're pushing the vaccine, and regardless how you believe on the vaccine, um, why aren't we seeing push on the therapeutics? In other words, whenever you have flu season come out, what do they push? Third flu? Or whatever is appropriate at the time, you know, like whenever I was a kid, you know, it was fluids and, you know, uh, the BRAT diet, depending on what's going on with you and whatnot. So, things of that nature. How come we're only seeing the push, at least perceptually, of the vaccine rather than the, um, the therapeutics that could be beneficial? Because from what I understand, and whenever I got COVID, uh, they said, oh, you don't, you don't qualify for any of our therapeutics, because you don't have this respect or this respect or this respect. But if a therapeutic can help you go through the, through the disease process better, why would we not be utilizing? disease process better, why would we not be utilizing that? Because we don't go, well, third flu may or may not help you. Oh, you have these different risk factors, we're not going to give you third fluids. Here's our treatment. So, you know, those are the things that I look at as well, when people are asking me the same question, or in the medical world where I do work still, and we have those conversations, because I deal with pregnant women all the time. And there's still a lot of contradictory information out there that we're trying to, to wrestle through. So, where's the push on the therapeutics and things, and other alter, you know, other things in that nature?
I'll share, I'll, I'll head back to my office and get that to you. So the, the Health Alert Network for South Dakota just, just pushed out a, a PDF yesterday on some therapeutics. One of the problems with some of the therapeutics is, is a lot of them are, are still in that emergency use authorization category. And, and some of the things with some of the therapeutics, just like we saw earlier with some of the other various vaccines that were in trial, is anytime you put something into your body, there, there are untoward effects. There are always things that happen that we didn't necessarily want to have happen, but the good outweighs the bad. And obviously, the, the, there are, you know, some, some accepted levels of how good does it have to be to outweigh some of the bad. And when we look at some of the therapeutics, and some of the, the age restrictions, and some of the, the co-commitment issues of, of who gets it, who doesn't get it, a lot of that's informed by the risk. So if, if a therapeutic carries X amount of risk, that risk has to be offset by a benefit. And for those people that have certain conditions, that, that benefit to them offsets the risk that, that some of those untoward effects from the therapeutics might have. But I will say that, that just in the last couple of days, I have seen more and more information coming out on therapeutics. So, how can we help? And really, an undercurrent conversation that has been happening for at least six months, is, is you'll hear medical professionals across the country, and even globally, saying that we are getting much better at treating COVID-19 infections. You know, we are, we are figuring it out, we are getting better at seeing patients through to discharge, we are getting better at keeping patients at home and not being admitted. So the, the, the medical community at, at large, even globally, is always getting better on, on therapies, and how do we, how do we get people through an illness? And I think we are, we continue to get better at that. VAERS data, man, it's a tough database. You can, you know, I can pull what I want out of it, anybody can pull what they want out of it. But it's, it's the data that we have, and we have to interpret it the way that we want to interpret it. You know, you can also point to VAERS data, and the, the person that said they turned into the Incredible Hulk after they got the vaccine. Because anybody can put anything they want to into there, which works both ways. So the people that say, hey, the VAERS data shows that it's safe, well, you've got some really erroneous data in there. People that say the VAERS data shows that there's really a concern here, there's still erroneous data in there. So unfortunately, it's not a, it's not a, I wouldn't stake everything I had on, on the VAERS data. It's, it's sketchy data, regardless of how you're using it to make an argument. But I agree that that data is there.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
John, did you have anything relative to COVID?
Okay.
Shannon.
Good morning. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I want to say, I'm doing my part. I was one of the 2,000 over Christmas. I'm here for abatement applications. You've got five of them. All of these are properties that the county acquired and then gave to the city. The abatement stops the, the taxes on the property when it is acquired by a tax-exempt entity. So that's the reason for all of these. And then I've got to say that at this time of year, we do a lot of these, and there's going to be a lot more coming in the next couple of meetings. I, I just gave a stack of 25 or 30 to the auditor's office, same kind of situation going on. So we'll deal with all of those as they go through the various towns and city, and get back here again. This is just the start.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Oskar.
I will move to approve the abatement applications for the City of Rapid City for tax year 2020 for parcels 56619, 5593, 65740, 62865, and 62762, in the amount of $304.08.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Any public comment?
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Items from the Commission Manager, Holly Hennies.
All right, Commissioners, per the bylaws and rules, this is the time of the year where the Board has the opportunity to make any amendments or adjustments. And we can do so, or you can choose not to.
Is there, is there any recommendations for, suggestions for bylaws changes, or rules or procedure? Seeing none.
Move for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve them as are. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
You.
Items from the Chair and Commission Members. Been a little bit of a quiet time the last couple of weeks. Commissioner Oskar.
I'll just kind of run through real quick. Been talking to some residents or individuals who own lots, and a developer dealing with the Valley View water issue of getting water connected to them, or how it's going to be impacted if, if they don't have water out there, if something happens to those water lines from Box Elder. Talked some more about the Anderson Road, with the landowners and their concerns, some infrastructure issues. I'm also having a meeting with Box Elder and their concerns with Radar Hill Road and some of the infrastructure problems that they foresee with a lot of development going out in that area with high density. And so that meeting will be on Friday, and Joe Miller's going to be there as well for some of the traffic and, and impact as well. A meeting with Rusty this afternoon for dealing with some of the water issues out there, too. And then, update on EPA, it looks like we're getting closer to a, a date, probably in March for that public meeting. I don't know if, I think everybody got it in their packet, but the, the Community Involvement Newsletter that they send out on a quarterly basis on the backside of it, it actually shows that we're having that meeting. It'll be to determine, we're waiting for one agency to confirm that they can meet that timeframe. And if they can, then that'll be the date that we schedule. And just food for thought, you know, I talked to the Deputy Sheriff, Sheriff Brian Mueller, and he pointed out to me, because he and I had been talking, the Sheriff's Department was interested in using some land over in Box Elder for the, for the jail's gardening. And he took my advice and went and had the land tested, and it came above the PTHO, PFO, and so they decided to pass on that. So just, I mean, it's a good thing that we're, you know, we need to be paying attention to this, and anything that the county is going to be doing or working with that could be impacted by this PTHO, PFO, we may be getting ourselves into potentially growing a garden if we're not paying attention to what's there, and then contaminating our prisoners. So I mean, it's just, it's just some of the things to think about. But I'm thankful that Brian, you know, brought that information to me, and, and, and they did not move forward with putting a garden there for the, for the jail. Outside of that, since it looks like I'm the only one with committee reports, if you don't mind, I'll just touch on that, because it's really easy. I actually didn't make it to the Healthcare Board meeting, because I had an ultrasound going out of the time, and I think Lloyd, and I gave Lloyd heads up, and he made it to that one. So, outside of that, that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you. Pretty much, I think we had, you can bound the Services Board meeting, where they just finished up some final stuff for the year. And there's nothing really to report on, on that. As the Community Health Board meeting, what they did is, they elected new officers. We, we thanked and, and gave service to Mary Corbine, who was the chair for the year. I don't have the names of the new, new officers of the board, but then they had discussions that, you know, the numbers that Community Health was seeing for the month had risen quite a bit. And that was one of the things. Another thing they had was their discussion on the, the COVID tests, getting more of that men coming in January to be able to distribute out. And otherwise, it was a pretty much a wrap-up into the year, Christmas meeting, so.
And I have none. Commissioner Oskar.
The only item that I would bring up is that we did meet a few times looking at how we want to redistrict the county. And I think that's something that we really need to focus on. There, right now, I think there's three proposals, and I think the first one might, might not be the best one. So, in my information that I've received, received from Holly, there's another proposal two, and a proposal three. And I think we need to look at those real hard, and figure out what's going to work best for the Commissioners and the residents of the county going forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Hancock.
Yes, I also met with some of the residents in Rapid Valley, and I did go to planning to look at water sewer and where that's being annexed, some of the traffic study that's going on out there. Probably have to get with Joe on some of the drainage areas that might need detention ponds or retention ponds, one of the two. There's some more development that's going to go around that TIF, it looks like, as well. So, to the east of it and to the north of it. So, heads up, I think the traffic study is going to be huge. The annexation of the water and sewer, and where that connects to the west side of these developments are going to be huge as well. So, there's a lot going on in Rapid Valley that I believe our Commission needs to pay a little bit more attention to at this time, just because I think it's going to be some huge impact, because it's turning into a city, and we are not getting sales tax or anything to be able to do that water sewer, which Rapid Valley is doing. But still, you have to do connection and different things for the people that are out there. So, how are we going to get that done? I know, talked to Rusty, they are going to do some of those and not charge connection fees to some people. I think we're turning into an area with a comprehensive plan that is not very comprehensive at this time. Meaning, what is going to be the impacts depending on County? The more we get that development out there, and the more development, like there's Phase 1, 2, 3, 4 of Murphy's Ranch. There's four phases to that TIF. There's more phases that are going to go to the east. There's more phases that are going to go to the north of development. We are going to have the impacts of Radar Hill Road in 1460. And these are all coming around Longview. People are coming out that way. Just, just a big heads up. I have been looking at that with Travis, because that's his, mostly his district. But we are, we are five county Commissioners that make that impact of change of how we can make that difference for Rapid Valley. And I don't see the city anytime soon annexing in the west side of Rapid Valley. Whether that is turning them into a small city, or, or they annex themselves in to Box Elder, or what's going to happen for the future in there. I think the people out there are looking at possibilities. So I think this county, as Commissioners, we should look at the possibilities and what we need to do in order, I, I don't know if we want to keep them in the county, if we want to let them annex into Box Elder, if they need to, I don't, like I said, I don't think they're going to annex into the city. Can they make themselves a little town or a city in Rapid Valley? I mean, these are questions that people are asking me, and at this meeting with Travis as well. So, I have no idea. And I don't know how we get there. With planning, they are looking at some of their stuff and, and some changes for a comprehensive plan, but they need our help. And Rapid Valley, I think there needs to be a, maybe a discussion as a whole out in Rapid Valley, what they really want to do out there as constituents. So, anyway, just food for thought.
Yeah. We've got vouchers totaling an amount of $931,252.40.
I need to abstain if I could for the
You know what I'm saying?
220 for the Rose Inn.
Is there a motion to approve the voucher in the amount of 220 for the Rose Inn?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried with Commissioner Hancock abstaining. Second motion would be to approve the remainder of the vouchers, and the amount of $931,032.40. Move to approve. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 23 is Executive Session.
Move to go into Executive Session pursuant to STCL 125-21 for personnel issues.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Take a motion to come out of Executive Session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. John, would you bring us a couple of motions, please?
Morning Commissioners. John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. So the following motion is from the Highway Department. The motion is requested to place David Burnett, Dalen Keeny, and Robert Sands at Grade B 21 Step 6 for $18.84 an hour effective January 9th, 2022.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second?
Take him.
All, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and zoning. Need a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Take him.
Got a motion and a second to go into Board of Adjustment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
We got to go.
Items from the public, we kind of jumped one.
Oh, sorry. Any items from the public? Anybody here that would like to bring something before the Commission that's not on the agenda that we can discuss, or won't take action on? I'll see you. Okay. Go back to Board of Adjustment.
Good morning Commissioners. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. Item A on the agenda is subdivision regulations variance SV 2129 to waive the requirement to dedicate and improve the section line right-of-way. This item was continued from your December 7th Board of Adjustment meeting. Staff did go out and look at the section line area and made the determination that there was some constraints due to drainage. The Highway Department and other staff did go out there with the applicant and the applicant's agent, and they are in agreement that they would move it to this area over here and create this access easement, so those properties to the south will have access. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision regulations variance SV 2129 to waive dedication and improvement of the section line right-of-way with the following condition, that a 66-foot-wide access easement is dedicated for access to properties to the south and shown on the plan for the Sunset Ranch subdivision.
Garmin.
Commissioner Hancock.
I move approval based on staff recommendation with one condition.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any, was there any objections to this after?
No, I do not believe so.
Okay. Any public comment relative to this? Seeing none, back to the Commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Need a motion to adjourn the Board of, as Board of Adjustment and reconvene.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item B, capacity hearings.
Cody Sagam, our middle planner. Item B is vacation of section line right-of-way BS 21-06. It is to vacate 351 feet of a section line right-of-way located along the east lot line between Sections 32 and 33 of Township 1 North, Range 7E. The applicant and landowners, Michael and Catherine Cruz. This was continued from the December 21st, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting, due to comments from Highway not wishing to vacate the section line. I believe that Highway still has the same position, not to vacate the section line. Staff, though, is still recommending approval of vacation of section line right-of-way BS 21-06 with one condition.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So, one of the Highway Department's concerns was is that benefit the general public, and by granting that vacation of section line, it's an entitlement that the county will give to this landowner, and doing so, he's going to, the property is going to have more value because of that entitlement, and if it has more market value, then it's going to have hypothetically a higher assessed value. And if it has a higher assessed value, then hypothetically, it's going to generate higher real estate taxes for the taxpayers of Pennington County. So, in that sense, there is a benefit to the general public.
So, I guess I'll start with, Sean and I did go out there and look at this with Mr. Cruz yesterday, and one of our concerns is we haven't even seen a layout plan for exactly what he wants to do on the house. We spoke to him, and it sounds like, Mr. Cruz, you want to go 16 foot off the back of the house? So, it was 18 feet, I apologize. Off the back of the house, and we just, we haven't seen that layout plan, but speaking of Mr. Cruz, it's, and I was just talking to Megan about this, and she won't support either one, but where would the benefit from the county vacating the section line? There's actually, do we have a pull-up Rapid map here? Bottom line, a setback variance, you know, would be a better option here rather than vacating the public right of way. It accomplishes the same thing, still allows the landowner to build his property, and it doesn't, it leaves the public right of way intact for future development. There's approximately 300 acres to the southwest, there is a large drainage to the south of his development, but there's also buildable area up just to the, excuse me, the east of his property there. Let me, why that's there? Where's Rapid map here? There it is. But, the Highway Department feels a setback variance to this would accomplish the same thing and still leave the public right of way intact. Whether that's a viable option, I think the landowner has been told that a setback variance is not an option in this case, which I guess from a highway standpoint, not knowing planning and zoning zones and outs, we're having a hard time understanding why that's not an option, so this will never come home. With that, I guess I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So, I asked Mr. Cruz to kind of provide a history to all the other commissioners going forward, how we got to this particular point, and if I understand the dialogue, he did go down to Planning and Zoning Office and ask for a variance, because he thought that was the direction to go. And if I understand this dialogue right, Planning and Zoning Office said you might be better off vacating the section line, it's easier to do nowadays. People do vacate section lines when they, when the topography is such that they could probably never be physically, financially feasible for any type of access. If it was level, I can totally understand that, so he also paid the $350 fee going into this process, so I think he's done everything possible. He tried to vacate it, and upon the suggestion of another county government, eight, or office, he decided to go for the vacation, and he did all the proper procedure, it's all documented. And I just feel that this is a situation where we ought to take that into consideration and approve the motion.
Well, on Rapid map, I'd like to point out, so there's a, this is a relatively flat area out here, while you can come off of Dunsmore, this is all relatively flat, or relatively flat, right? Developable area, there's a large ravine down through here, and then you get over to Highlands, and it actually gets back on the section line, so there's another developable area here. It's hard to say how all this area is going to develop out. You look over here at Kit Peak, and you go down that road, if 20 years ago or whenever this was all developed, I'd tell you there ain't no way in heck somebody's going to develop this area, but again, it's been done. With that, I think preserving the public's right of way is there for the public's use in doing a setback variance while he's still not getting into the section line, the 33 feet, it just requires a little bit of a setback variance, and he can still accomplish the same thing and preserve the county right of way. So, it accomplishes both things. Whether that can be done, I don't know, that's.
So, Chairman.
Chairman. Commissioner Haidcock.
So, Cody, tell me why he can't get a setback variance?
Cody Sagam, our middle planner, there's no topographical hardship that would prevent a variance, there's no hardship for it.
So, what's the option, instead of vacate a public right of way for him to get, put his property where he needs to be? Is there any other solution for that, besides vacating a public right of way, which looks like would be in access later?
So, Megan Crewe with the State's Attorney's Office, so the reason why, and Joe kind of briefly alluded to it, is that I don't really support either option that has thus far been put forward, because there are other locations that he could build in addition and have what he wants, which is just additional space, just not building it off of the back, because he's got this area in the front, he's got area on the sides, the only location that he wouldn't be able to put in addition would be in the back. So, he has other locations, that's why it doesn't necessarily meet our ordinance or meet the requirements for a variance, but I also don't necessarily believe that one property owner's personal benefit to his property by vacating the section line is necessarily in the public interest, as opposed to, as Joe said, this could benefit, this road that could potentially be there, could benefit this entire property on the backside. So, that's why I don't, I can't support legally either option that's been put forward.
So, bottom line is, is the variance and the section line shouldn't be an option if you can put, because he hasn't built anything yet, he just wants to, and it's in a flat area on his land, Cody? So, why did the staff recommend approval on the, didn't you guys recommend approval on the section line?
So, staff recommended approval on the section line because we talked with the City of Rapid City, and that portion of the section line's not on their MPO, their major street plan, but I'm also not going to go necessarily against Joe and Highway and say that if they don't want to vacate it, that it shouldn't necessarily be vacated, it was just working with the agency of Rapid City, who would be the ones who would plat that jurisdiction. They have access points coming off of different areas than that portion for that portion of property.
So, they could only vacate half that section line at 33 feet, right? Because he doesn't own the other half, am I correct?
Correct, he's only vacating the 33.
So, we're only vacating 33?
Oh, no, sorry, sorry, no, 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 sorry, wrong. It's all 66, it's all 66 feet, you can't vacate just a 33 portion, because the way state statute writes, or how it describes section line right of ways is it's 66 feet wide, so you can't, you can't legally bring it down to 33 feet, because of the state statute.
Is he the adjacent property owner to say that he can go ahead and vacate their section line as well?
No, but he, so in order to vacate a section line, you just need two-thirds of the signatures in the area of the properties around it, and he got the two-thirds signatures that's required. So, he got the signatures that are required to vacate it, it doesn't require the 415 signatures from the public anymore.
So, when you vacate the section line, 33 feet goes to him, and 33 feet goes to the landowner next to him, he doesn't get 66 feet, he only gets 33 feet?
Correct.
And there is another access point to those lots if we vacate it?
So, if you look at the green, the green dash line, this is what the city has for their, for their future MPO plan for accesses to that, those properties in that area. So, they have one coming off of, I think this is Highland Hills, and then Kit Peak, and then off of Highway 16.
So, they have two other accesses to this property if they needed to, if you vacated it?
Potentially, yes.
How far is it vacated, just his?
Just his portion. So, the portion to the lot to the north, that 66 feet would still be there.
Okay.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Who owns the property to the east? Is it one single, I'm guessing it's one single owner of all that land?
Yes.
Is it an individual, or is it a government entity, or?
I believe it is one individual, I don't know if it's under an LLC or along those lines, but it's listed as one property owner.
So, hypothetically, if they decided to plat that out in different lands, especially in that section right up there that butts up against there, if they wanted to put five or six lots there, they would have access down to that point, and then they'd have to maybe do a jettison road around it and then get back to that public access. Is that kind of how this would work if we vacated that?
Potentially, yes. There's also, so this portion of section lines only being vacated, there'd still be this portion to the south that could potentially come up as an access point.
There's a lot, yeah, I see that ravine down the bottom, I'm just talking about that north of that ravine, I mean, there's buildable land there, I mean, even having that public access point going straight up and down, I mean, it's not like, it's a sheer cliff that's right there that we might not be willing to put in a road or try to fill in to do something. I don't see how that's benefit to the public, removing that particular right of way, if that particular landowner next to him also wanted to develop, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thanks, Cody.
Mr. Chair, I just might point out, that section lines do get vacated, there is a pretty elaborate process that's got refined to a more simpler process, and normally the reasons that a section line gets vacated would be just the terrain itself, and it's my understanding from reading this dialogue that that terrain involves a gully, when the topography gets so adverse, it just doesn't become financially feasible to develop that, you would find alternative routes, or you would change the density of the property to larger parcels that would meet the topographic constraints, so I just want to point out that vacation lines do get, or section lines do get vacated, and normally it's because of the terrain, which if I read everything that Mr. Cruz stated, that terrain is rough and probably would never be used for public access.
So, can Mr. Cruz come up? Is that okay, Chairman?
Sure.
Okay. Can you tell us some of why you're vacating and stuff, sir?
I wasn't planning on talking, but I'd build a shop, and I had a contractor take it, the plans in, and they okayed it, you know, with the building permit, so I did the same thing here, and that's when I found out that was a section line. The, I bought this on an estate sale, and they told me it was survey where I could build on where I wanted to, and that is the only place I can build on, otherwise I have to change everything in the house. I mean, it's a, it's a utility room on the only other side, that's where our utility room is, that I'd have to go through, and that's where her, we just put in all new windows, and that's where our window that views the forest. But nobody's ever going to build a road there, because there's a deep draw on each side, and to the south and the east, after you go a few hundred yards, it goes open and flattens out, and that's the way they would get access to it. These guys did come out yesterday, and they were very nice and everything, but even he said that, you know, they probably wouldn't support it, because that's what they do, but he saw no issue with really doing it.
So, Mr. Cruz, did the landowner that you're vacating next to that would get the other 33 feet, he's in favor of this?
Yes, both of them on each side are.
Okay, thank you.
Did I say to the east?
Yeah.
No, I couldn't get a hold of the one going that way, but the two on the side of me, I thought that's what she was talking about.
Yes, the one that would be taking the other 33 feet, and you'd be taking their access.
I wanted to get a hold of the one to the east, but I couldn't get a phone number for him, they said he's in Massachusetts, but it's an LLC, and they didn't, no one could give me a number.
So, the other.
When I went in there, I thought I was going to talk to him about getting a variance, but, I mean, when I went in there and started talking, and I don't remember if you were the guy, okay, and then he brought up another lead, and they gave me the paperwork for this vacation, and said that that's probably the easier way to go, and I figured they'd invest.
I guess for me, the deal is, the 33 feet that you'd be vacating would be yours, and the other person will get the 33 feet, but what if he decided he wanted a road in his area, meaning with the 33 feet, once you vacated it?
Deep draw on each side of the property.
Okay.
And it would be so cost ineffective to build a road through there compared to coming from the other direction, it just really doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, Joe.
If I may.
Would be access, Joe, from the other direction?
So, he's correct, there's a deep draw right here, as you can see, right? And that draw kind of runs up through here, but if you take access, if you, there's a picture right here, so this picture on the left is actually looking pretty much down the section line, you can see kind of the corner post here, but it's relatively flat until you get to about the corner of his property right here. So, if I'm looking forward and putting my developer hat on, you know, what the city's got here for access, all well and good, but how are you going to get access to this portion up here, right? There's, if you look at the city's street plan, there's access to all of this stuff here, but there's no access to any, pretty much here up. If you've ever taken a drive down Kit Peak, it's a very, oops, very, very steep road, you know, and there, if you put a road down to, say, right to the edge of this, the cliff here, put a cul-de-sac, there could be driveways off of that road, off of that section line that's there, to develop this portion of this property. Otherwise, there's no, you know, his, Travis Lassiter alluded to it earlier, you have access down to here, but you don't have access to the rest of this, you'd have to come out here and go around, because the section line's been vacated. And as Mr. Cruz said, I don't see any issue with vacation, vacating the section line, I think there's other options, so. I think the setback variance would be, I was just talking to Cody about it, the sheelys down off of Neck Yoke, right? That was a setback variance. There's other, there's been several incidences, and Megan's going to probably throw knives at me or whatever, but the commission has done setback variances prior as well for this same type of issues, but, so that's, that's my opinion, I think a setback variance while preserving the public right of way would be better suited here.
Can we, can we give back his money and then put it towards a setback variance, since both are not good, but the setback variance makes more sense than vacating a section line?
I'd like to say one thing.
Yes, sir.
It's not true that it's flat up to my property. Dunsmore Road curves there, because there's a deep draw right there, and if they wanted access, I suppose they would go down the same line as the very last house is, but they can always get access from the south or from the east, and it's flat, and.
Mr. Chairman, and sir, I hear what you're saying, but if I look from the south access coming straight up, there's a deep ravine, I don't agree that they have access going north.
The south and east is my reptile garden there, and it's completely open, and it's complete, it's not flat, but it's a general, there's no draws in between there and where the trees are, but there is on each side of my property, and that's why there's no other houses down that way, is because of that deep draw.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
We're looking at a map, we're looking at a GIS map on a flat screen, I think the do this gentleman justice, we all deserve to go out there and make a site inspection, can't do it here today, not without going to the property. That's just, we've done that before on other section lines.
We just want to get something, we've been trying to get this, we've lost our opportunity to do it this fall, because we started trying to get things done in early October, and everything's just taking a lot of time, and I know there's steps to go through, but we'd like to get something done at some time, that was our, we bought, we bought a nice lot, but we bought a house that was older that needs work, and that's what we're trying to do.
I just want to remind Mr. Cruz that you need four of us to vote yes.
No.
Not on this one?
Three.
Not on this one?
We're out of the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
You know, and I don't mean, like I told Cruz, you know, I don't want to slow this process.
this process down, he's already missed his opportunity for the fall build, um, you know, the continuous last time was, I believe, for everybody to go out there and make a site visit, that was the reason for the, the, the continuous last time, um, so...
And I invited everybody to come on.
So, I, I favor Commissioner Haddock's suggestion of going back to the, the variance, but what process has to take place to do that, Cody?
Um, Cosa environmental planner, so he'd have to fill out a, um, a form to get on the agenda, to get in front of you guys, to grant his application feedback, we wouldn't necessarily be able to transfer it over from, um, from the section line to, to the variance, uh, 'cause we'd have to wait for that meeting, if you wanted to...
Yeah, do it today?
If you wanted to apply for the variance sooner, it would, you could apply for the variance today, um, but you'd have to wait two weeks for, to get back on the agenda for the meeting, which would push him out farther for the variance date.
So, Mike, you, you've probably missed the construction period, I presume, for the immediate time.
Oh... You missed a lot of things. We were supposed to be on the agenda for the seventh, and my wife took off of work, and I came here, we, and it was a pact, but we stood around here two hours, and nothing happened.
Yep, apologize for that.
Finally talked to somebody that said they had an agenda, and, 'cause I didn't know all things, I'm Stanley County, and it's a lot different there, as you would know, and, uh, they moved our deal, nobody told us, and it's just been a, a lot of waiting, and it just looks, I don't know, I'm farmer and rancher most of my life, and I can see, just looking there, what, if someone wanted a road in there, what the best place for a road would be, and it's not coming through those draws on either side, but...
I agree with you on that, um...
So, can I make a...
Personally, I'd like to see it go back to the variance.
Yeah.
I, I think that makes most, most sense, um, I don't see a lot of objection from the commission on doing that, I think we'd like to, to give you the opportunity to do what you wanna do, so, if, if you're willing, uh, to fill out the paperwork for, for the variance, and set this up, can, can we set this up for, in two weeks?
Cody?
Uh, the variance wouldn't be able to go for two weeks, 'cause there's notifications in the paper and letters that have to be sent out with it, uh, but we could get him on the agenda for, if you, uh, to request his money back for the section line.
We can actually do that today, we can give his money back, so he can reply for the variance, that could be the motion, if I'm correct, Ms. Holly.
We typically don't do that, we put it on as an agenda item with the official request.
But we could make an exception.
This, this is not typical.
If the board wants to make that motion today?
I believe, I'll make that motion, that, um, we give back the fees that were for the vacation of the section line, and, um, then let Mr. Cruz apply for the vacation or the setback variance at the next meeting.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, further discussion.
Question.
Commissioner, look right.
Would that kinda be like in a credit, so he not actually issuing a check, but like a credit to go for?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing is, it can't be for the next meeting, there's advertising requirements that need to be made, so if you just wanted to issue the refund...
How long does it take to advertise?
Yeah, 'cause they have to advertise so many weeks in a row, so Jerry will have to re-advertise the request for what it is for two weeks in a row, so we'll have to find out when that meeting date will be to meet the advertising requirements.
And you can't build right now anyway, Mr. Cruz, right? So, if we had to delay you because we wanted to try to help you with this situation, um, a month's not gonna delay your building or anything?
No, he wanted to come and start on the, they do the, oops, excuse me, they do the outside part, and then they connect it after they get that done, he wanted to, he's been wanting to get here for a month, but I just didn't think there'd be any trouble with...
I, I just think it'd work better this way, sir, so you could get your, your building where you want, instead of us denying a, a public access to people, and that's why we're trying to find a solution for you, so you could still move forward and, and get your building where you want, sir.
There's no reason to deny it, no, that's, that's you guys' deal, I guess.
Okay.
It's just, what's the other one that gets denied?
Um, I think you were in agreement that that would work for you, if I'm correct, so...
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
The surveyor who I had to get was, he agreed with doing it this way, I mean, he, I guess he done that.
Okay, so we, we have a motion, no...
Okay, we got a motion, and, and a second, further discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four to one, Commissioner Roskin. Nay. I got a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. There's a second.
Read it, make sure I read it right.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There's a bunch of stuff underneath there.